Mic'd up and cellphone off.
Okay, well, I'll call the workshop to order. Good morning, everyone. I see everybody's excited about our possibility of having all these extra dollars to spend and float around. And with that, I'll go straight to the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank all the elected officials and department heads and personnel for showing today for this very important budget workshop. You know, I'd like to thank the board for allowing us to have this budget workshop. Once again, the county has posted the entire county budget package on the website to provide greater transparency and accountability in county government. What we'll be presenting to you today is an accumulation of hard work, coordination, and cooperation by staff and elected officials alike. I want to give very, very special thanks to Assessor Kinch.
Supervisor Johnson.
Has joined the conference.
Constables Hamilton, Cobb, Cullison, Crabtree, and Hogarth. Clerk of the Superior Court, Berlin, Tenell. Recorder Blair, Treasurer Cox. County Attorney Matt Smith, Sheriff Schuster. All the Justice Court judges and the presiding Judge Gertler, thank you very much. Once again this year, you were true partners in the budget process, bringing forward no increases from last year's budget on those items that were under your control. Without your leadership and commitment, we could not have accomplished a high level of cooperation and achievement which resulted in the thorough work product we're presenting to the board today. Lastly, in addition to all the tremendous work that has been done by my directors and their staff and their divisions, I want to thank Coral Lloyd and her team. They're just outstanding individuals. I want to thank you for all your heavy lifting, long hours, and coming up with a balanced budget document which brought us here to where we are today. Thank you very much, sincerely. The budget workshop is scheduled to have five components. As a kickoff, I will provide you with a brief overview of the budget process along with some opening comments. From there, Ms. Lloyd will provide you with a financial overview of the county and staff recommendations along with what to expect in the way of scheduling for our pathway to budget adoption. This will be followed by the elected officials and department heads wishing to do so, having an opportunity to address the board with any comments and answer any questions which the boards may have regarding their proposed budget, new initiatives, and capital budget purchases. Next, there will be a call to the public to obtain public comment from the floor. And lastly, the board will have an opportunity to discuss the preliminary budget. But first, I want to recap the extensive process that we've gone through to date to bring us here. In January, our internal services departments of IT Communications, Janitorial, and Fleet submitted their budgets to set the foundation for cost allocations to each department in budget preparation. In February, we received the assessed valuations for the FY 2018 levy set by the assessor's office. On February 12th, we held our budget kickoff meeting for all departments distributing budget packets and instructions. On March 5th, budgets were due to be received from all departments with financial staff reviewing all department requests during the month of March. March 21st through April 2nd, financial staff and I met with each department and elected official to review their budget requests. At your April 16th meeting, the board adopted a per parcel charge rate for special districts. At that same board meeting, the board scheduled this budget workshop for today. During the month of April, finance compiled program budgets, modified zero-based line item budgets, analyzed and summarized new initiatives and capital requests, and worked with departments to finalize fund budgets. On May 3rd, the state adopted their budget and additional impact estimates were finalized and brought into the county's projections. That same day, finance finalized the preliminary budget for board presentation. May 4th, a printed copy of the preliminary budget was distributed to each supervisor. On May 8th, an electronic copy was posted to the county website and notice was sent out to other elected officials and department heads. And that brings us to today's workshop. But before turning this meeting over to Coral, I'd like to share some thoughts. You know, I've been with the county for roughly 34 years, and working for the county's been interesting, challenging, and rewarding. And when dealing with the county, our citizens demand excellence in customer service, and rightfully so. Customer service is everything. When interacting with our sheriff or our courts, our citizens expect them to be prompt, courteous, consistent, and fair. They also expect them to be professional and experienced. Citizens expect our health and community services to provide the support needed to keep our communities healthy and lift up our less fortunate. After one of our desert deluges or one of the horrendous snowstorms up on the Wallopis, citizens expect Public Works to have crews out, rain or shine, day or night, regardless of weekend or holidays, working to put the county back together. People don't want to hear excuses; they demand excellence in customer service. To be able to meet expectations, I believe it's the county's responsibility to strive for continuous improvement, to provide a more effective and efficient organization, to try and create the best organization we can be. To this end, I believe the county has come a long way from my first days with the county, even though there is most certainly always room for improvement. Notwithstanding you, the Board of Supervisors, the main reason for county successes are our outstanding employees. I'm extremely proud of the employees of the county and their day-to-day dedication. I'm also very, very grateful for my fine group of directors. I believe Mojave County provides excellence in government, and we certainly have exceptional employees. But excellence in an organization can be a very fragile thing. It doesn't take a lot for the wheels to come off. In my short five-and-a-half years since I began as county administrator, of my 15 directors, only five were with me when I started. Fortunately for Mojave County and our citizens, we've been able to replace those directors who have left with outstanding individuals who had the needed talent and skills to make our organization successful. My point is, excellence necessitates the ability to attract and retain exceptional employees. The ability to attract and retain exceptional employees requires most of the following: It requires strong leadership, motivation, adequate facilities, a challenging work environment, competitive compensation, stability, employee recognition, training, and chance for advancement, and employee benefits. Excellence also takes a commitment for continuous improvement. If an organization is not striving for excellence, it's on the road to mediocrity. With mediocrity comes complacency and bureaucracy, delays and excuses. Vacancies increase, staffing becomes inadequate, permitting slows down, inadequate enforcement ensues, zoning violations in blighted areas increase, economic development suffers, our judicial system gets bogged down, and our infrastructure deteriorates. Every year, we truly lay the foundation for future levels of the overall efficiency and effectiveness of Mojave County government services, whether that be permitting, code enforcement, health services, public works, judicial, or law enforcement. So every year during the budget process, the actual question that comes before Mojave County and before the people of Mojave County is, where will we be taking the county as an organization? Since I started as county administrator in 2013, Mojave County has had only one cross-the-board raise for employees, and that was in, that was a two-and-a-half percent in my first year. The board made a conscious decision to wait for a revenue stream to address classification and compensation countywide because addressing that was not an option. Further doing nothing with the employee compensation could severely damage this organization. Instead, the board embraced templates to address county compensation issues in specific areas of the county. Those templates that were approved by the board for employee compensation were as follows: They were rightsizing, they were hot jobs, and then also allowing elected officials to work within their existing budgets to provide compensation to their employees. It is my opinion, these measures greatly influenced the health of our county, but were just part of a solution. I believe the true test of the success of these innovative measures to employ compensation would be, at some day in the future, being able to address those employees who were left behind. I'm very pleased to say that day is at hand, and that future is now. With that, I'll turn it over to Coral. Thank you.
Good morning, board members. Essentially, what I'd like to go over with you for the finer points are the more detailed pieces and components of the budget. And I'd like to start with the overview and follow up to some of the items that Mike has said, and review those and the actual costs for those and what we're expecting. The overall budget is about $278 million, which consists of $88 million in the general fund and the balance in all of the other funds. Now, there are some funds with very large projects, as you know, that are primarily public works and development services areas that really summarize the balance of the very large investments in infrastructure. The general fund, well, the entire budget, I should say, but specifically with the general fund, we're presenting to you today a balanced budget with no tax rate increases included in this budget that we're presenting. The budget reflects an overall improved economy. We can see that with the revenues that we're currently receiving. As of today, we are about 4% over our projections with where we were and where we were at this point in time last year. Departments really worked together, as Mike had mentioned, to try to stay as flat as possible, given the additional requirements that each of them have. And then, right at the last, right at the last minute, we needed something to close the budget gap, and the reversion of the state costs occurred, and we were able to get the budget balanced. So I'd like to thank all of you and those that are specifically responsible for making that happen. I couldn't be more pleased. I'm just very happy with what we've been able to present to you. Early on in the discussions back in January and February, when we were talking, and then specifically going through with the departments, I think the entire time that we were talking with Mike about a potential $1.4 million increase in revenue. We're kind of holding that to the increased assessed values, if you will, based upon the information that was presented by the assessor's office. And I wasn't really sure about what was going to happen with the state cost shifts at that time, very much not, very unsure about that time, and certainly not what was going to happen with state shared revenues. The state of Arizona, the agency that they use, their agency, the JLBC, the Joint Legislative Budget Committee, has been putting out information about a 7% growth, a 6% growth. But keeping that recurring into next year, wasn't really sure. But when the state actually was able to adopt their final budget, the numbers came in, and in fact, there is a solid growth pattern. It looks like it's going to be recurring, at least for the next year or so, and we've got our number. So that's really what had happened, and the difference in what we were preliminarily discussing and where you may be to where we are today. So overall, our budget compared to last year is about $3.3 million higher in expenses. And we'll outline what essentially makes up the bulk of that. Interestingly enough, when you compare to 10 years ago, and this is the whole general fund, everything wrapped in together, the budget that we're presenting to you and asking you to consider is $800,000 less than 10 years ago. So, very interesting just to take a look at the history and see where we are today. The challenges that we face, that you all face along with this, again, are these recurring expenses that creep up year to year based upon contract costs, the CPIs that are included in those. We've got drivers into the internal service costs from time to time, although this year we're actually seeing reductions in some areas. But overall, O&amp;M costs are generally going to increase year to year. So since 2012, Mojave County has balanced the budget, keeping an overall tax rate flat, with the exception of just last year when the library, a piece of the library tax was returned. But you've been able to do that with basically the shifting of the balances, you took in the state cost shifts, and still came up with a balanced budget each year. And it was very tough, and there was a lot of smoke and mirrors to some degree in getting that achieved each year, but it's come together, and we're now sitting in a pretty good spot by shoring up the general fund. Again, in accomplishing that, there were certainly areas where we were deficient and we deferred initiatives into the future. As Mike mentioned, we did not provide compensation increases. And to some degree, there's a penalty to pay for some of that as you go to the future. If you let that go too far, then infrastructure is obviously going to cost a lot more, as you're catching back up, sometimes that the costs accelerate. So we're seeing some of that coming into this year's challenges. We knew that we needed to address the half million dollars from the compression pay from last year. We needed to roll in the $800,000 from the jail maintenance that we were taking over from the, having that paid for out of the quarter cent sales tax in prior years. We knew that there was going to be something happening legislatively with the elected officials' retirement plan, and it received pretty good estimates primarily from the County Supervisors Association to help us kind of really navigate through that. And the overall estimate for that, and to not grow that fund, is a million dollars. So we've got that included in there. And I should note for you that the public safety retirement system, they've taken care of it for us in the respect that they're now requiring us to budget annually for that. They've closed the period of amortization. We're now into a 20-year closed period of amortization, and we're paying about $2.4 million a year to, toward the current and future unfunded liabilities. And then, of course, the last item that has been mentioned was to include some estimated cost for left behind compensation. While I'm very, very happy, can you tell? I mean, I really am happy to deliver this budget proposal to you, but there are some areas of concerns, of course. Wouldn't be a good finance director if we didn't say, but wait, of areas of concerns that we know of right now that I do want you to be aware of, and that you do have some large tax settlements still looming before you. There are certainly threats of federal program reductions for, we use federal programs tremendously for the community services and the health services particularly. It looks like PILT funds have been included in the current budget, but I'm not definitive as to the future of those monies and how they may be rolled back, I believe, by at least 10%. And thank you to Supervisor Johnson for continuing to keep us informed on those monies and the actions that are happening. And then, of course, more recently, then, all of you have been working on water resource items in the various areas throughout the county, and we did include, in the current year, some legal service money to go out and work on those areas. But we've also increased that a little bit next year, and I'm not, I'm not quite certain that that's enough. But it's what we could do at this point in time and still remain balanced. But that's something that you may still want to consider and take action on. So overall, what we are proposing is to allow us to utilize the approximately $3.3 million in additional revenue that we'd be receiving this year, again, from an increased value through our assessments, as well as new construction. And interesting on that, on that area, of the increase in assessed value, about half of that is from new construction and the remaining balance from the existing values and the existing properties. So it's not the, so not all of the revenue is on the backs of our existing businesses and residents. It also includes bringing on the taxes from the new investment. It looks like we're estimating, well, I'm estimating about $1.2 million in state shared sales tax. That's about a 5, 4% to 5% increase, which is less than the state estimates that ranged about 6%. And then, the balance of that money then would be from an increase in auto lieu, and the department charges for services have increased, and many of those departments have been before you asking for fee support. And then, investment earnings are up. So essentially, we are asking to use that money to offset those four primary items, and otherwise, basically remain flat with a few differences primarily offset with, if the department charge went up or a department cost went up, some of those out of their control. Many of them were offset by additional revenues that they expected to receive during the I don't want to bore you with going through all of the initiatives and recapture every little dime that's in that budget. But overall, I wanted to go over the primary points that are in the budget message, and you can give me the cut sign if you're, you know, I've already read it and I understand, move on. But I want to provide this information essentially for the public, for you to know, the primary points that we found. And I'll start off by kind of unusual amount of reclassification and progressive plans were submitted this year, and how we work those out with the departments. So to start off, the recorder's office has an initiative to reorganize some positions in the voter registration office, and we would offset any change of any affected employee with the in lieu left behind pay. And that will be the common theme for each of the reorganization plans, is that we have the, a list of employees that we are currently estimating would arrive on that plan, on that left behind list. And if the department so chooses to and is approved for a different type of structure within their department through their own management, then we would remove those employees from the left behind list, and they would be a part of the reorganization plan, so that they wouldn't receive both types of compensation. The assessor is proposing, with her, with the backup pages in detail, on a progression plan of the certified appraisers and the cadastral mapping series jobs to allow for progression as employees move through certifications and achieve those milestones. The treasurer's office is proposing to eliminate a vacant position, which would provide them the funding source to have an opportunity for merit increases within that department. They would also put back a little bit of money in overtime and then include temporary salaries for employees during their peak collection periods that basically occur twice a year. Overall, this initiative reduced their personnel expenses by about $5,400. And again, the same, if the employees were impacted by that, they would not be receiving both a left behind compensation and then catapulted with a reclassification or a merit. The county attorney's office just had a couple of reclassification of some attorney's position and an advocate, advocate position. They're doing that essentially with savings from their underfill budget, and there would be no impact to the general fund. The courts will likely want to walk through some greater detail about some of the issues that they're seeing, but they are showing a need for a part-time commissioner and a part-time judicial assistant based upon caseloads that they're, that the Superior Court judges are carrying. And that would also then subsequently require a new full-time courtroom clerk. So when we met with them, obviously, we needed to discuss the funding and how the general fund was going to absorb as little as possible of that cost. And essentially, half of the funding for the commissioner and the JA would come from fill-the-gap funds, and overall, it'd be a $17,000 increase to the general fund, and the courtroom clerk would be sourced from fee funds. The courts have also asked for an administrative services assistant, a part-time security officer or bailiff. And the way that they would source that is through unfunding a vacant court reporter position. They've also included a salary adjustment for HR staff, which then, if that were approved, then that would come off the left behind list. And probation, the initiatives for probation in their grant funds includes a couple of new officers. For the departments that report to the county manager, we've submitted initiatives for just a few items, a reclassification of a staff position in the legal defenders office, some overtime in the public defenders office, which has not previously been budgeted. There is an initiative to reclassify and restructure the economic development director position as a direct report under the county manager. And a reclassification plan was submitted for the public fiduciary's office, which would allow her staff to progress as they achieve their certification. There was also an initiative in the senior center, and that, within the health department, it was just one position, to reclassify just that one position. We included a representative position in the community services department, which is funded by grants, and then a slight split funding recalculation for the HR department, and it was a very nominal impact in both funds, both the EBT and the general fund, and I think it was less than $2,000 either way. In other areas, the assessor's office included a new vehicle for use in the field, and they've obviously been before you and talked about a lot of other activity, work activity that they are doing to go out and canvass and survey the county to a greater degree with more efficiency. In discussing this with them, we proposed the idea of maybe utilizing a used vehicle out of the motor pool with lower mileage that was still in really good shape, that would overall result in a lower cost. So the, the public works division, they went back and took a look at that, identified how this could be achieved, and at this point, that would be our proposal, is to allow for that. Otherwise, then the initiative would stay as a new vehicle in the assessor's office. The treasurer's office has a few items for equipment replacement. The sheriff's office excluded and retracted all of the new initiatives that they had submitted from, I won't say all, many, almost all of the new initiatives, every one of them that they had brought before the board were retracted, and they're currently trying to utilize those available funds to the best of their abilities with the best deals that they can find during the current year. And consequently, then they were able to present the same budget with one area of an initiative, and the general fund was just staff training, and that was an increased line item. And I've forgotten the number, but I believe it's up to $32,000 or something in that range. They also had some grant funds for other items, their radars, and some other working equipment that they use in the field. Similarly, for the other funds, in the library fund or in the other departments that we've got listed here that were in your message, the library has a few initiatives for upgrading their cameras and their wireless access. And again, those were And again, those were non-capital in nature, based upon the dollar values. And then in the development services automation fund, it does include a balance of several hundred thousand dollars, and that would allow development services to go out and get consulting services to upgrade their Acela system. Public Works in the non-capital area did include minor tools and equipment, and the parks budget includes a fee schedule initiative. So this is kind of on the opposite side of that, on the revenue side, for additional park entrance fees for sustainability, and I believe that they have established the -- came before you already and established a future public hearing date. I could be wrong about that, but I believe that was correct. No? On capital initiatives, there's a list that's detailed in the budget. I presented here some of the carryover items, and there aren't money, from the prior year that would impact the general fund. We've increased what we send over to facilities maintenance. This past year was $300,000. We put in an extra $100,000 this year to address some of those items. And otherwise, those are listed within the detailed budget book, and I'd be happy to go over any of those with you, as well as department representation if you'd like to discuss any of those. Moving on to the 1/4 cent excise tax, a major, major project that we have included in the budget next year is clearly to begin work on the construction, reconstruction of the Law &amp; Justice Center located in Kingman. Revenues are up. There's a 5% growth in our sales tax collections. So we increased the estimated revenue going into next year up to $6.7 million. Looks about where we're going to end this year. And that allows us to, again, we're still very close, but present to you $23.5 million in that fund overall for the entire construction. That includes the current design that's underway, but that's where we would be looking. So if there's any additional funding sources that would be needed prior to completion or even delivery of that contract for approval, the construction contract for approval, then the board would need to make some final decisions potentially on that. So I'm just going to spend a few minutes on the library and TB district because they're a little bit unique compared to the general fund and some of the other funds. But essentially, in projecting the current year, it looks like we will have a deficit of about $140,000. So going into next year, the increased assessed value resulted in a $195,000 increase in revenue, which is about a 4% increase. The revenue, the new revenue essentially would cover the deficit. So we wouldn't have to present to you, could you go back and raise another penny or two or three in the library fund? However, from a budget basis, you're going to see that the library operating fund is upside down, that there is a deficit, because we do budget for all the costs, as if all the positions were filled the entire year, and of course, that rarely if never happens. And then there's times we receive over the budgeted revenue and at times we receive a little bit less. So I wanted you to just understand that component, that actually, the actual deficit exists. We would hope that the new revenue would cover it, but from a budget basis, it does not. In addition, the renovation of the Kingman Library does include some working efficiencies, and we're hoping that we would have a year into that to evaluate those and see if we continue to have a budget deficit or an actual deficit, or if it right sizes based upon continued growth. If the economy declines or if assessed values, something occurs with that where there's a large tax settlement, there's a huge reversion in values, then we're going to have to come back and talk about the rates in the library. But at this time, as hesitant as I would be as a finance, as your finance representative, we may be able to keep this one together for the time being. On the building side, again, this, the budget does include the expansion of the Kingman Library in the current year. It will be about $4.3 million is what we're estimating right now, and that would allow you to retain a fund balance in that fund for about $2.1 million. The TB district, I would say that we at maximum have another year to go on that one before you've run out of and expired the fund balance. We are projecting a deficit each year for about $700,000. By the end of this year that we're currently in, and the beginning of next year, we'll have about $1.5 million, I would estimate, which would decline then down, you would be down to your final year. The new increased assessed values, the new growth in revenue is only $14,000 for next year because we're only taxing 2 cents. So it would not be sufficient to sustain that fund going forward. So we would definitely need to come back and consider options no later than next budget Overall, and I've already kind of discussed the growth in the assessed value, but just to give you the foundation, if you will, of going into our final comments in the budget message, that the current tax rate is 53 cents below the maximum tax rate. And just a few years ago, a handful of years ago, Mojave County was nearing or at and has been at before the maximum tax rate. Coming under the tax rate at $1.96 represents about $9 million annually as savings to the taxpayer. The maximum levy growth has a limit by statute that is 2% of the max levy plus new construction each year. And Mojave County has not been pursuing the 2%, just on our, on our rate plan. We've not been pursuing the 2% each year, although the budget that the county manager and I have presented each year has always included, our recommendation is that you consider going up by the 2% just to have an incremental increase each year to keep up with the growth. We have not adopted that. I just want you to be aware of that, that of course, we're going to talk about it, we do every year for consideration, and that the consequence at times, based upon the growth as well. But as is the case currently and last year, the TNT rate, which is the truth in taxation rate, is actually falling to a lower tax rate than it was if we had been taking the 2%. So for '18, '19, if the board adopted a tax rate of $1.96, which is exact same rate, and you stayed with that rate, you have to have a TNT public hearing just to keep your current rate. And that's just how the law is written. The TNT rate now has fallen since 2016-17 from $1.98 to $1.92, which equates to about $1 million in annual revenue. So with that, I think that's the end of that little lecture about that, but I want you to be aware of it and informed so that when you talk with your constituents, that you have a foundation in which to have that dialogue. So in closing, in regard to the fund balance, the fund balance is now at about $22 million in the general fund plus a $2 million contingency. About $7 to $7.5 million of that funding that is in the fund balance came from one-time sources from the other funds, where we've moved funds around and swept some items to move it back over into the general fund. This has allowed us to be in the position that we are today, where we are balanced. We have three months of working capital in the general fund. The contingency is a little weak. It's about 2%, and really, a reasonable amount would be between 5% and 10%. That's generally the case in most, anything that you would enter into any type of contract or item where if you're within 5% or 10%, you're pretty close. With the $2 million, I think since I've been here, we've only come close to spending a million in one of those years. But that's not to say that there isn't going to be something that could happen, or the economy changes and you're going to need to utilize that money. So I just want you to be aware of that, that from just the financial perspective, that we would encourage the board and like to see progression towards improving the contingency a little bit over the years, so that you're in a position, when eventually a downturn happens, that you can go through the downturn without having massive issues to deal with. And as usual, of course, we would always recommend that you consider a 1/4 cent sales tax or an extension of the existing 1/4 cent sales tax to fund some of those items that are your priorities and address some pension liability issues that are not going to be fully met with what we're doing, to shorten the timeframe for the public safety pension. We have remaining buildings that are still on that capital projects list, one of them since the beginning of when, 20 years ago or 19 years ago when the tax was adopted. We know that the funding for the facilities is going to be required just to maintain those buildings as they age. We also know, obviously, they continue to increase in some of the lawsuits that are on the horizon. In the budget timeline, based upon your discussion today, we've given room for additional discussionary workshops if you need them, but we would request that we adopt a tentative budget in June, no later than the second meeting in June, which would be fine. We would go into the next fiscal year with at least a tentative budget adopted. We would then advertise for truth in taxation hearings, and we're going to have to have one for the library, no matter what you do, and for the flood control as well in those districts. So we would get those scheduled for the first meeting in August, and then, of course, the adoption of the tax rates would go to the second meeting in August. And so with that, I will turn it back over to allowing you to have the dialogue of, you know, what you're presenting and what the board of supervisors would like to achieve in the budget. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe in accordance with the agenda is, Ms. Lloyd, is now the time for the elected officials to come down and speak if they so wish to.
Yes, please, go on down, Randy.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Luke Mornian. I'm the Management Analyst Senior within the Treasury. And Treasurer Cox just wanted to thank you for affording her the opportunity to speak today. She sends her sincere apologies for her absence. She had a personal emergency that prevented her from attending this budget discussion today as she wished to do. I'm here to answer any questions about our department's budget, if there are any. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Questions for Luke? Just if you'll relay a message to Treasurer Cox that we'll just deduct about 10% for her absence today.
Thank you, Chairman Watson, Supervisors and County Manager Hendricks.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm going to be very brief. As was noted, we aren't asking for anything this year. We're trying very hard to work with all the departments in the county, but I do want to make clear that you're going to see me again up here probably next budget year. We have to continue to work on the staffing level. I think you all recall my presentation last year, that the county's more than doubled in size, our crawl volume's tripled, yet our staffing's lower than it's ever been. So we're working on a seven-year master plan. That's something I will get to you within the next couple of months. I understand that it's not going to all be done at one time, but we need to start moving forward with that. So I thank you all for your due diligence. I appreciate all the support you've lent to me since I've taken office. And one other point of, I guess, order would be, I do struggle when it comes to my overall budget, and I come to this board each year asking to spend what would be left over from salary savings for needed equipment. I've done that twice now. And the point being is, historically, the sheriff's office has had and will more than likely continue to have some overage each year. If that was a situation where I could bank on that overage each year, I could certainly turn that into much-needed staffing, and that's something that I think we could talk about in the future. So, thank you.
Good morning, Director Gertler.
Good morning. May please the chairman, supervisors, county management and council. Always pleased when administration and finance presents a balanced budget to the supervisors for approval. However, I think our budget process is somewhat skewed. I think we tend to put the cart before the horse. And the reason I say that is that we really don't have an opportunity to address to the board what our needs are before the draft budget is presented to you. This is my sixth budget year. Every year, we have been told, keep your expenses to what you're at, keep your budget where it's at. In two years, we were requested to do a 3% and a 5% cut. Well, this year, I'm going to take the opportunity to kind of demonstrate some of the issues that we are facing as we continue to try and stay within that budget amount. Staying within our same budget amount, we have continuous employee turnover. We've compared it with some, the other counties that are closest to us in size and case filings. They're, the turnover creates operational inefficiencies. When you're having to retrain new people constantly, you are not being able to provide the same level of services that an employee that has already been trained, has been on the job for two or three years, is able to provide. As I go through some of the further slides, I think you'll be able to see why, in particular, Coconino, Yuma Counties do not have near the employee turnover that we have. The turnover by length of service clearly indicates that within the first five years, that is where we have the majority of our turnover. So as I stated, we're in the constant training mode, trying to keep and bring people up to speed to be able to do their job, and like the sheriff's office with respect to probation. That's a huge expense for the county because we have to send them off to the academy. We continue to be the training ground for other counties, who then don't have that expense of having to train them and having to send people off to the academy. Our HR department conducts exit interviews. The top three reasons as to why employees leave the courts or probation in Mojave County: lack of opportunity for advancement, salary and benefits, including health, medical and PTO. And these are consistent explanations as to why they are leaving. The county, as County Manager Hendricks has specified, has only given one raise to county employees, and that was his first year as county manager. In comparison, Yuma County has given four raises, two COLAs and two merits during that same timeframe. They are looking, they have done a salary analysis of their employees, and they're waiting to see how the tax on their jail district, or excuse me, the vote on their jail district occurs, and that is actually today, because their proposal is to give their employees a substantial raise based upon the jail district tax being passed. Coconino County has given a raise every year. Coconino County has given a raise every year, COLAs virtually every year, with the exception of this year, but then they're giving a huge merit raise. They've had three years where they've given not only a COLA, but also a merit raise. Yuma is similar. They, again, almost every year have been able to provide either a one-time payment, a COLA, or a merit. As you can recall from the previous slides, those counties that have not given raises have very high employee turnovers. The counties with lower turnover rates are ones that are consistently giving raises This slide is going to be utilized with respect to a couple of other slides that I'm going to show you here. In particular, if you take a look at the court employees, including the clerk's office probation for Mojave County, we have a total of 177 employees. Coconino County, which has approximately 50,000 residents less than us, and has extremely severe, a caseload that does not even remotely approach ours, almost has the same number of employees. Yuma County, which is of the same size, has fewer criminal cases, but similar case filings, has almost doubled the amount of employees that we have in our court system. Even little Cochise County has more court and probation employees than Mojave. Similar, again, with Yavapai County, which has similar caseloads, they have 100 more employees than Mojave County. The vast majority of the court and probation employees are dedicated public servants. I would say that for the vast majority of the county employees, are dedicated public servants. And yet, we continue to have issues with respect to recruiting people. We have issues with respect to the turnover. I recall when Supervisors Brotherton, Angus, and Moss were first elected, there was talk about doing, you know, a salary analysis, and here we are, five, six years later, and we've never done that. As you can see, in our case filings, we have significantly more case filings than Coconino County, and yet, they have the same amount of employees in the court, a similar amount of employees that we do. Cochise, approximately one-half of the cases, and yet, they have 20 more employees than what we have. As I stated, Yuma County has almost 150 more county employee, or court and probation employees than Mojave County. And yet, we have 600 more case filings than what they do. We have almost 600 more, we have over 600 more criminal filings than what they have. And take a look again at the probation levels. We have more criminal filings, 600 more criminal filings. We have 92 probation and adult, juvenile and adult probation officers and staff members, and they have 208. With respect to Yavapai County, their number is somewhat skewed. And the reason I say it's somewhat skewed is that they include within their criminal filings, all felony cases, even those felony cases are taken to or filed in the Justice Court, which is what we do here, but we don't count those in our numbers. In other words, if there's a Class VI felony for marijuana possession, that's handled in the Justice Court. That's not handled in the Superior Court. We don't add that number into our case filings, but Yavapai County does. When you take those away, they are very similar in their criminal filing numbers and their case filing numbers as Mojave County. And yet again, they have 110 more employees than what we do. Their probation staff is almost double what our probation staff is. And the probation statistics, I think, start to really start placing this into, to the point that I'm getting at here. If you look at our DPO entry salaries, we are fairly competitive with the other counties. However, as we advance, we fall behind tremendously. Our average DPO II, Deputy Probation Officer II, is making $44,678. These are college graduates, and yet, in Yuma, they'll be making $7,000 more. In Yavapai, they're making at least $3,000 more. When you get to the DPO senior, the discrepancy becomes even greater. In Coconino, they're making $16,000 more a year. In Yavapai, they're making $19,000 more a year. In Yuma, they're making $10,000 more a year. When you get to the upper management position, it's even worse. I don't have to give you the numbers, they're right there. This comes from the Supreme Court's annual report. That's where we took the numbers. And so when you turn back to the three reasons why you're leaving, salary, lack of advancement, well, if I advance, I'm behind the, why not go to Yuma County? Why not go to Coconino County? Why not go anywhere else? Because the moment I become a DPO II, I have more employees to help me, I have less files to work on, and I get more pay. That is what we're faced with here in Mojave County, and yet, every year, the budget, we've been told, either cut 3%, 5%, or stay at the same level. Folks, I think we need to do this budget workshop before we start the draft of the budget. I think that we need to complete the study that everyone talked about five years ago with respect to salaries. I haven't even mentioned court needs. We don't provide all the mandatory services that are required by statute. Every judge is to have a bailiff. We only bring in a bailiff if we have a jury trial. It's considered a security issue. But there are also new programs that are coming out from the AOC, and they're targeting the use of bailiffs because every judge is to have a bailiff. As an example, you know, with the systems becoming more and more electronic and sophisticated, we now fingerprint, or we're required to fingerprint every individual who's convicted of a felony. They now do that electronically. You know, they set it up for bailiffs to do that because every court has a bailiff. Well, not in Mojave County. Digital evidence is becoming the big issue. And I worked on the task force the Chief Justice turned around and created last year, and Maricopa County is already doing this. They have their programs set up whereby digital evidence is already presented in court. I mean, people aren't coming in with an exhibit consisting of a paper, or a DVD, or a flash drive. It's electronic. And when someone turns around and makes a point about that digital evidence, as an example, law enforcement that has the cameras, and they're showing a crime scene, and they cut into it, and then they start marking, you know, look, you can see the knife here, you can see the bullet spot there. The bailiffs turn around and they screenshot that particular thing because on appeal, that's what the jury saw. That's what has to go up on the record. The bailiffs do that in Maricopa County. We don't have that. We're supposed to have a court reporter for every judge. We have five court reporters covering nine. And we do a great job of trying to turn around and take them from, you know, judge to judge to ensure that they're taking care of the cases that are most apt to go on appeal. Probation is going to be facing new issues. This is already happening in Maricopa County and Pima County because the county attorney's office there has been doing it for years, and our county attorney's office likewise has now started to do this. They provide a plea offer. We don't have parole in Arizona. So the plea offer might say, you'll spend 10 years in jail, or prison, excuse me, and then you'll get a probation tail. Maybe it's three years, maybe it's five years. If it's a sex offense, it's going to be for life. So now we have these people that normally would have gone on parole, they're now going on probation. They're already set to handle this with their probation staffs. We are not. I think this is the type of information that needs to be presented to the Board before we're told, stick to your budget limit, stick to last year's amount. Folks, we're getting to the point where you can't. It just simply won't work. I'd entertain any questions.
Questions for Judge Gertler?
Thank you.
Our next elected official, I see Matt Smith back there. Did you want to address the Board?
Good morning, everyone. I have very little to say this year, other than it's a pleasure to work with a Board, a County Administrator, and particularly our Finance Department with these ladies here, in an environment where, instead of hearing no all the time, which is how things were maybe seven, eight years ago, now we have people that are actually trying to help us accomplish things and to move forward. So I think it is time to bring that to everyone's attention, that working with Mike and Coral and everybody in the Finance Department, Sonia, they're just fantastic, and they really try to provide an environment that's positive, help you try to accomplish things, look out for us, give us suggestions on how we can move forward, and how we can maximize the budget that we have. So you really have a great department here, and I just want to show our appreciation for it. And I also would like to say something nice about my office manager, Lisa Samstag, who's here and does a fantastic job in the budget every year. And I think that some of the people in the departments that are able to keep departments consistently under budget every year should also be recognized. It's not me, because, not that I'm a spendthrift or travel a lot, but it's really the management of Lisa, as well as the Finance Department. So if anybody has any questions regarding anything involving my department, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Board.
Good morning.
I want to reiterate what he just said. It was an amazing year. I think we all worked very well together. We've done a lot in our department. It's been very important to us to accomplish a lot of things, and we have, with thanks to our Finance Department and the Board. And if there's any questions you have for me, also, I'm here. We also are striving for excellence, just like Hendricks had said, and efficiency. It's very important. Our employees are very important for an efficient group to assess appropriately and continue with the amazing work we're doing. There's any questions? Thank you.
Questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you to Jean, because you have, you have done such an excellent job of turning that department into a real, like you said, cohesive one, that ultimately you're the hub of it, you know, the value. So thank you so much for all you do.
It's been a pleasure. I have a wonderful crew. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, here you go.
I think everybody's said it very well. It's been amazing to just have this cohesive group that's working together. And if you have any questions for me?
Question?
We're working.
We're working. Very good. Thank you very much. Any other elected officials wishing to speak? Judge Huerta?
Good morning, all. You know what? I don't want to beat a dead horse. I want to thank the, and appreciate the effort that's been put in this year. Obviously, I don't want to show the lack of appreciance for the suggestion for a catch-up for the salaries that the Mike and Coral have presented to the court, or, excuse me, presented to the Board, but I would, without sounding like a broken record, I'd have to reiterate Judge Gertler's emphasis on staffing, maintaining. A lot of his was directed towards the Superior Court. In our particular court, we're about the third busiest court in the state, and our staffing hasn't changed in over 15 years, and the obligations that are required by our court to maintain the amount of work that we're putting through is extremely draining. So I don't want to go rehash all of what Judge Gertler has emphasized, but I do agree that it's, I'm fairly new at this budget process, obviously just being the presiding judge over the last few years, but if I had the opportunity to give the sales pitch prior to what's needed to make sure that the justice courts are operating properly and cohesively for the benefit of the county, I do agree that that would be a great benefit, so.
Questions?
Doubt there's any questions. Get away from the like, they say.
Thank you very much. Any other elected officials? To department heads, or courts? Courts again, or? I believe we've received the information that we need from the court system as a whole. And I can just say, from my point of view, that we've come along the way in the last nine years, from going through one of the most severe recessions that, that I can recall, and now to a point where we're achieving a kind of a parity with, with our revenues and our expenses. And I certainly appreciate where the courts are coming from, the probation's coming from. We've certainly addressed a number of the issues for the Sheriff's Department, and I assure you that I'll be working with Judge Gertler and those folks in the court system for next year. But like it's the ant eating the apple, we can't chew the whole thing at one time, we have to, little bit at a time. So with your patience, if you'll know that we'll be working towards achieving your goals next year, we'll be doing that, or that's what I feel we'll be able to do. So with that, we'll go to department heads. And who would you like for?
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the Board, I would invite any department head that wishes to come down and speak in front of the Board. You're welcome to do so, you're encouraged to do so. So I would like to open it up in that fashion, and then if the Board has, would like to call any department head down to ask them specific questions about their budget there. Certainly can do so.
You're more than welcome to come down. John Timko's not here to shoot you this morning, so. We have one. We have one. Come on down.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, and the rest of the board. I don't want to speak. I don't like public speaking. But I wanted to say I'm the newest director here as a public fiduciary. And it's been almost a year since I came on as interim. It's my first budget year. It's been an experience. And I want to thank all the department heads and elected officials, everyone that's helped me out on this. And that's really all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right. Now we're at the point for a public comment. Anyone wishing to speak freely to any issue on the budget, come on down. This is too easy, folks. Okay. Discussion with the staff? Do you want to go ahead and move to that area? Mike, do you want to go ahead and initiate that?
Mr. Chairman, now we've reached the time that the board, if you all have any questions or want any clarifications or have any issues with anything that's on the budget, staff is here to answer any questions. And the finance is certainly available and capable. And we'll try to field your questions as best as we can. Thank you.
Okay. I'll start with Supervisor Johnson. Do you have questions for either elected officials or department heads?
No, I don't believe so. When it comes to the board for finals, I don't have my questions. But the process is the same process that we've always had where department heads and elected officials meet with the county manager to put together a budget that's then presented to the board. So I'm not sure what people are talking about when they want more input. But that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Wakamoto, do you have questions for any of the elected officials or department heads?
No, I don't. This was very informative for me, but I appreciate what you said in terms of working with next year's budget and trying to see if we can fill in some of the gaps and needs that we have.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Did you hear that?
Thank you, Supervisor Wakamoto. And with that?
You're welcome.
Thank you. I guess we'll close.
No, you didn't get to me yet. You didn't get to me and Jean yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sitting right here. Well, first I want to say, wow, what a difference a year makes. I mean, from what we talked about last year and to this positively pleasant experience, you know, I knew that this county could do it. You know, we saw what was going on. We saw the writing on the wall with the additional revenues. I knew our state representatives were going to work hard to make sure we got those sweeps back. And so kind of everything fell in place. And I want to thank, I want to thank the administration, finance, I know how hard you worked. I know this kind of wasn't the first plan, but it is the best plan. And, you know, as far as the raises, and when we told administration, what, two or three years ago, that, you know, to go into the departments and compensate people on their work, and not just, I don't like across-the-board raises, I think that that landed us to where we are today, that we can give raises to everyone. And I always said, if we can do it within the confines of the budget, that would be the best way to do it, not to raise taxes, to give salaries. That's never a good thing for the morale of... You know, we always talk about the morale of the county, but we're talking about the morale of the, I mean, of the employees, but the morale of the county. So I am very proud of this budget. And I just wanted to thank you so very much. Thank you, Mike.
And thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Well, there's not much left to say after Supervisor Angus gave that raving review. And I can't do anything but agree with it. But this was my first year being the legislative liaison for the County Supervisors Association, which gave me a real appreciation to see firsthand what our legislators are doing at the State Capitol and how our CSA organization works so hard to work with our legislators and our county supervisors to be able to come back and present a balanced budget because Sunny and Regina both worked really, really hard and all of the other legislators all over the state to stop some of the sweeps. And we finally have the ability to keep some of our funding here in Mojave County. And I'm proud to have a balanced budget. And, you know, I've gotten beat up pretty bad over the last few years about the budget. But I've got nothing to say. It's balanced, and I think we're good. So thank you all very, very much.
Well, I guess my comments will wrap it up. If each and every one of you get an opportunity to see Representative Regina Cobb or Senator Sunny Borelli, you may want to thank them personally. They worked extremely hard this year to make sure that over $3 million were not swept from the cities and counties here in Mojave County. And those dollars are the dollars that helped us balance the budget. So each and every time you get to say thank you to those folks, it was to their achievements and making sure those sweeps didn't occur, and also the vitality of our local economy so we could achieve all these goals. And with that, is there anything else? Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great day.